It's 5:45. We have a call workshop session. The order, Tom?
Mayor, Council, we previously discussed with you the I-35 corridor development plan. We have gone back and made some changes to update that plan. We have both Trent and Nika here to walk through the plan. And once we walk through it tonight, if there are no further questions, we would like to bring it back to your consideration at the next meeting on the 17th. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Trent to make a few introductory remarks, and then Nika will walk through the plan.
Good, thank you. I'm going to stand up just because I'm more comfortable doing that, and I want to turn it over to Nika. My part is really just introductory in terms of sort of beginning to walk through what this is going to look like for Louisville. And I can tell you that in the time that I've been here, there's probably nothing more exciting and more important than this plan. As we begin to look at what the I-35 corridor is going to look like, and I've had a chance to look into all of the contemplated uses, the areas, the designs, it's a pretty exciting element. But it's also an element that I think it's one where we are rapidly reaching the point of no return. Because once we start down this road, it's a pretty critical thing, I think, that we as staff stay very aligned with council in terms of where this ultimately goes. Because this is literally the type of plan that will require that kind of alignment. There will potentially be rezoning as it relates to this. There will certainly be changes in use. There's going to be a lot of opportunities to kind of waiver off this and back onto it politically over the next several years, and we understand that. But I think what we want to do is, as we go into this, make certain that we have a good foundation, that our assumptions are correct in terms of understanding what the I-35 corridor means to you from a policy perspective. Some of the things that we've tried to guard against as we've begun to work on the ordinance and work on the details is that when we contemplate areas where mixed use is one of the higher, you know, anticipated uses out there, we've got to be real careful what the associated uses are next to it. So if we have a tract that's 60 or 70 acres, that's all undeveloped today, sitting on I-35, we've got to make certain that as we develop these ordinances, we don't allow for a circumstance of patchwork quilt designs, where we have one design, and for 10 acres it looks great, that everybody likes, but then it comes down to an auto use or something other than what we contemplate next door. So we've tried to look at it very holistically and make certain that as we head down this road, we've created an opportunity for alignment, from your policy perspective to our implementation, to make sure that all these ordinance steps are accurate. So it's a, I know you've done a lot of work on this plan already. There's been a lot of work done in the past month on this plan, and even more that Eric's working on as we develop the actual ordinance itself. But pretty critical that we be on the same page with you as we head down. As I talk to economic development prospects and as Nika does, one of the first things I'm always asked is, what does the implementation of this I-35 plan mean for my property? And I've had that conversation with some large property owners just in the last week. And it's important that we be able to convey to them what the policy expectations for this property is. Because if today we've got huge sections that are set up as industrial, and that industrial does not meet what we contemplate to be the highest and best use, we're going to have to take some steps to make sure that we remedied that. And that all has to be done with very clear policy alignment from you. So we've tried to think of most of the things we can from a mechanical standpoint, an administrative standpoint, but suffice it to say, it's critical that we give policy feedback on this, and that as we move forward, we're staying directly in line with council. So with that, Nika, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Trent. Mayor and Council, I'm going to be very brief on this plan tonight, unless if you have questions, and we could definitely concentrate on areas that you would like to concentrate, mainly because you have seen this plan several times now. And just to reiterate that this plan has been recommended for adoption by the I-35 Committee at the last meeting that they met several months ago. What we've done with the plan, which is in your backup, in your packet, that was the final plan that we put in your packet, which has been condensed a little. So we took out some of the sections of the plan that we thought are still in flux, especially that lack of property impacts. As the textile is still coming through to buy properties, some of those are going to change. So we took some of that out of the plan until we have the final documentation from textile. The other thing that we took out of the plan was the market study. We did a market study because we wanted the plan to have a market-based recommendations. But that now market study is about three or four years old, and it needs to be redone as we move forward with development. So we basically took it out of the plan for adoption purposes. So I just want to go through very quickly, just as a reminder of what this plan was all about. As you know, we wanted to, and we started this in 2009, 2010, because we wanted to get ahead of the textile project. We were one of the cities that basically had a plan in place when textile actually went under construction with I-35. So some of the cities are still behind, and they're trying to catch up. So we wanted to be ahead of the game. So the goal of the project was to provide guidance to impacted property and provide a market-based plan to guide development along the corridor. So this was our opportunity to change the look of I-35, the uses that we want I-35, and the purpose was to enhance the character of I-35 and create sustainable places, developments that would have value at the time of construction, that would keep their value for many, many years to come. And increase our tax base, because we knew that as I-35 comes in, some of our tax base is going to be lost due to right-of-way taking. So our goal is to basically not only recreate that base, but also makes it a lot better and a lot stronger than what we've had before. This plan also serves, which is extremely critical for if you're going to rezone any property, generally it's good to have a plan in place so you rezone properties in accordance with the plan that you have adopted. So it's going to not only serve land use and guidance for development and economic development in terms of funding and going for grants, but also serves as a basis for rezoning along the corridor. Again, the components right now, which will be in your packet hopefully for adoption at the next meeting, is the corridor development plan itself to guide development, design standards and guidelines. Again, these are guidelines that hopefully if you are okay with them, we will incorporate into ordinances that then would apply to development along the corridor. But right now, there are going to be guidelines attached to this plan that will be discussed development with the prospect, with the developer. We could say, these are some of the things the council would like to see as part of the project. And then we have a corridor identity plan, which is the public sector part of it, which we are, which you have funded, for instance, the aesthetic features for Garden Bridge and that whole set. So when we looked at the market study, the top market opportunities along I-35, what we had, we were lacking basically, and there were opportunities for us to go out there and get some of these projects, which would be medical services, legal services, investment services, management services, retail and hospitality. So when we developed the plan, we came up with four market areas. Now, this doesn't mean that just, you know, those spaces will have to exactly be in those areas along the corridor, but our goal is basically to concentrate some of these uses in areas that we think it's going to fit well, which is, we have Recreation Office and Hotel on the north side, so it would align with our Lake Development Project. We have Medical Services Research and Development closer to Main Street and where the hospital is. Office and Retail, which is along the highway, for instance, in the corporate area and Waters Ridge. Then, of course, mixed use and retail down south. There are also opportunities for mixed use development up and down this corridor, any place that we have vacant land. And at the end, we will show you the vacant land map. It's going to be very limited, so we need to be very careful on what we develop on that vacant land. We had some connectivity issues that this plan identified. These are some of the things that we'll be looking at in terms of transportation, because transportation and land use are so related with each other. If we want to have good land uses, then we need to make connectivity a major factor in terms of accomplishing that. And the plan identifies some areas that we could do better, such as intersection of Edmond and Main, or intersection of Mill and 121. And those are some of the areas we'll actually be looking at as part of our Blue Ribbon Bond Committee to come up with some kind of funding source. It necessarily doesn't have to be bond funding. We can go out there and find other sources of funding, but those are the areas that we need to look at for immediate term of connectivity purposes. In conjunction with the committee, as we were going through the public meetings, a top 10 priorities list was developed for the corridor. And if you look at this list, it all aligns with what the council adopted as part of the 2025, Louisville 2025 vision. Because primarily, we want the main street, Lake Louisville, and the mall area as enhanced gateway areas. We want to have pedestrian, mixed use developments, places for living, working, and a lot of green space. We want attractive furniture rolls to attract new businesses and new people to Louisville. So these 10 priorities are exactly, and it was very interesting as we were going through the exercise, that just about everybody had pretty much the same top 10 priorities. Not in a little different alignment, but primarily, everybody wanted to see the same thing in Louisville. We looked at our existing uses along the corridor, and right now, we pretty much have a lot of what we call underutilized properties. Now, some of these uses, again, you know, any business in town, we would like to enhance and protect, but some of these uses necessarily don't need to have highway frontage. So when we look at uses in terms of commercial, a lot of uses with outside storage, a lot of auto-related uses, then we can look to see where would be the best place for these uses to maybe relocate, so land would open up for a little higher uses for our future land use plan, which is primarily, again, mixed use developments, office, entertainment, hotel, retail that does not have very much outside storage, and of course, open space planning to enhance that corridor along the highway, because that is our front gate. That is Louisville. Everybody identifies I-35 with Louisville. So if you don't have that corridor that really shows what Louisville is all about, then, you know, as people drive by, we have lost a portion of the population drives through the highway and does not actually pull out to look to see what Louisville is all about. And again, this is our opportunity. Right now, what we have along the highway is a continuous pattern of basically strip What we looked at, both as part of the 2025 plan, as part of this plan, is what we call nodal development. Have three major areas that we have, the lake, which is the northern gateway, the middle section, which is Main Street, and 121 Business and I-35, that convergence of all of those roadways, and down south by the mall and 121 toll, to create more density, more reason for people to get off the highway and really come into the city and do shopping and working at those locations. And once you really concentrate on those areas, then the pieces in between will fall into place. So our recommendation is to primarily create a corridor overlay district, focus on those three nodal areas with the forum-based codes and focal points, and then partnership with developers to make sure those three areas will come to fruition. We also have, if you, the next time you drive on I-35, truly look to see how much open space we have around that, along that corridor. We have a lot of open space and creeks that we can really enhance into something that's a lot more than what we have right now. I think Carol and her crew have started actually working on cleaning up the creeks, and part of that program can continue and enhance, and this plan talks about how we can take advantage of those open spaces. So as we drive through the corridor, it's really going to be an attractive corridor with all that open spaces. We have talked about before about the identity that we need, up and down the three different sub-districts that we have, which identify the lake area as water, the central area as urban, and the south area as our park area, which we are working with textile on that. And then, again, the identity focal points, which is ours. This plan is divided into, just as a reminder, this plan is divided into seven sub-areas. The sub-area one and two is the lake development, again, that's our major focal points. At sub-area number five is the gateway into Old Town at 121 and I-35, and sub-area number seven is the mall area and Hebron TOD, transit-oriented development that we're working on. Each sub-area, and I'm just going to focus right now, or for this particular presentation only, on the sub-areas that actually we have developed a little larger plan, those focal points, those nodal areas. But each sub-area has, we have short-term opportunities for it and long-term opportunities for it. So the plan calls for short-term opportunities that we can do along I-35, primarily enhancing the landscaping, especially as we're getting some right-of-way additional right-of-way along I-35. We have a real opportunity to take a look at the landscaping along that corridor, and when you have a consistent, drought-tolerant, nice landscaping, you completely change the image of that corridor. Sub-area number two is where we really need to concentrate and focus on immediately. This area is under a huge development pressure and has a huge potential for us, because this is the area that we truly have the major vacant land along I-35. This is it. You know the challenge of redevelopment. We've had that challenge in Old Town for the past 10 years. The rest of the corridor is going to have that challenge. This is the vacant property that we really need to take a look at fairly quickly, to protect, to make sure that what's happening in this area is what you really want to see in the future for the next 20 to 50 years. Just remember, what you put on the ground right now is going to stay for that 50 years, and we may not, we may never get this ability to redo the corridor again. This corridor is going to stay for a very, very long time. So each sector has an existing mobility and open space plan, and it has a vision for the future. So we have looked at the land use framework for each sector. Again, this is the section that's primarily vacant and open. And this is one potential of what could happen, but when we have an alliance with the developer, hopefully we can go out there and have a public-private partnership with the developer fairly soon. Then they can come up with their plan, but the main components needs to be, that it needs to be quality development with mix of uses, and higher intensity uses that, again, can create that huge tax base for us from now till into the future. So we have done some illustrative plans of what that could be, what the land use typologies could be. But again, this is not set in stone. This is just an example, and we'll work with the developer to make sure the components are here. I think that's the key, that we need to make sure that uses are compatible. And again, those are the uses that are going to create that higher quality development for us. Sub-area five is going to be a huge challenge for us, because this is a very, very important area at the intersection of 121 and I-35, but it's all developed. And we really need to start engaging a redevelopment consultant and look to see how can we bring all of those property owners, it's very fragmented, but we need to bring all of those property owners together, get a plan together, and start really working to see how we can create that cohesive development at that moment. That's it. That's extremely, it's our gateway to Old Town, it's our gateway to Main Street, it's just an extremely important intersection for us to focus on. And the fact that we do have some shopping centers that are ripe for the redevelopment, we have a lot of extra parking areas that they're not using, so there are a lot of potential for redoing that area, but we just, we really need to focus on it. Again, this area has a framework, land use framework. If you recall, on this map that you're looking at, on the east side is basically just north of Bennett, if we worked with FedEx a couple of months ago, and we do have some public land now that we can work through and make a connection to Red Oak Park. So all of those things we can bring together and basically push it towards I-35 with some nice development that then could connect with our park system and with our open space, and create that environment that you're looking for. Sub-area seven, of course, is the mall. We've all had discussion about, the mall is really needs to start going through some reinvention. The mall is getting to be almost 30 years old. So, and we have started those discussions with the mall, actually as of three weeks ago. We have talked with their leadership that they want to come down and set up a meeting that we have talked about always, about what to do.
And I reached out to them.
Yeah. Well, it says, the email, nearly a year ago.
I know. And we met with them.
Kind of set up, yeah.
Yeah. And they've always said they wanted to do this, but now it's really time to do it and sit down. And we need to strike the iron while it's hot. So we have a vision, huge potential for out there, what we can work with textile in terms of future connections maybe to, you know, something to in between 121 toll and Hebron to have another connection over I-35. But those are all really long-term plans. Right now, our short-term plan is working with the vacant land of even 121 station where our minds communities is building our project, and then eventually make all of those connections, again, with open space, with mobility, with the rail, huge potential. I think this area could really develop in the next 20 years as something that's premiered in the area. We have done an illustrative vision plan, again, what could happen. We will work with any developer that could have some of these components in place. This is a great area for us, for, again, some new residential. We need to keep in mind that our, majority of our residential is old housing stock, and we need to not only rejuvenate the housing stock, but also start creating areas where we could have new residential. Because that's our, an area that we can create an advantage for new people to move into Louisville, for new people to start taking advantage of all the amenities that Louisville has. So some of these areas lend themselves to having that mixed use sub-residential and non-residential, and creating that new group of people that are looking for maybe a different type of residential to live in versus our old notion of just basically all single-family, detached, large law. So this area would create some of those uses for us. So on implementation of this plan, first of all, of course, our recommendation is for you to adopt this plan, because once the plan is adopted, everybody is unnoticed, that this is the goal, this is the future goal that we're trying to accomplish, and this is the path and direction that we are on. So the challenge of implementing a bold plan is to stay the course and remain focused once the direction has been set. This is not a plan that's going to happen tomorrow or next year. This is a plan that's going to have a long term to accomplish. But once you stay, once you establish the plan, if you remain on course, you will accomplish your goals. And it's important to focus leadership, guidance, and assistance on a limited number of areas to stimulate a few catalyst sites and further leverage development along the corridor. This is what Trent was talking about, and what we're talking about on the places that are the, what I call the low-hanging fruit, or Claude just called it low-hanging fruit, the vacant land. It's truly an area that we need to concentrate on to make sure your vision is really created there, and that would take off from that point on, along the rest of it.
Truly very much what you've achieved in Old Town. I mean, you stayed the course. You've been so focused over the years and consistent, and that's why we see, especially now, so many of the improvements occurring that have been envisioned over time.
So we need to prioritize projects, identify responsible city departments, timeframes, and potential funding sources for our public projects, which is exactly what we're doing with the Blue Ribbon right now. And then, these are the strategies that we're employing for before, after, and during construction, which is right now, we're working with businesses on business retention and relocation, and we're working, you know, of course, with Trent on new private investment and catalytic opportunities, and then we are looking at various development funding to see where we can get that. We need to manage and leverage the impact, so anything, any step that we take, it needs to basically create more opportunities for us. So if we're spending money someplace, that needs to bring more opportunity for us in terms of investments. This is what we are working, you know, with Eric and Eric's entire staff upstairs, all of us. We are trying to bring an ordinance before you. We will do a workshop session, of course, on it in the next few weeks, and then hopefully bring it to you, which we are trying to identify the properties that have been impacted by the actual right-of-way taking right now for Phase One and Phase Two. So if there's a future right-of-way taking, then we're trying to address that, and properties that have a minor impact, a moderate impact, or a major impact. So we are going to bring that to you. It's fairly ready to be looked at, and that would help our staff, and also help the property owners, because they were going to have a clear vision. When they come to talk to us, we can definitively let them know that this is what you need to do, if your property is impacted. So I think it'll help us in terms of public relations with the property owner, it'll help us with our staff that has to deal with it on everyday basis as they come to the permit counter.
We plan to bring it to December 15.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
I'll move it up a couple weeks.
Yeah, fifth.
See next week, Mayor.
We're close.
And so, basically, you know, this is a map that shows, you know, how the parcels are impacted, so we're looking at every parcel. This is the property availability map, and this is our northern portion, so, you know, we have divided the city into north and south. The green that you see on the map, those are the only vacant parcels we have along I-35 corridor. And so, it's very limited, and it's very important how we treat those parcels at this time. And then on the southern portion, as you can see, hardly anything on the corridor. We have just the little pieces just by 121 and I-35, and then as we go farther a little into 121 corridor, 121 toll, we have some vacant parcels, but generally, what we need to, what we have here is redevelopment parcels.
What are the purple signs?
Purple, we have some vacancies in the shopping centers that we can relocate some existing uses. But those, all of those shopping centers are truly ripe for redevelopment. And if we take action and some of these, some of these uses and some of these new developments fall into play, then those properties will be ripe for redevelopment. So in the appendix, you have the design guideline, which gives us guidelines on site planning, architecture, building material, landscaping, lighting, street furniture, public arts, and signage. And our staff, as they are looking at projects even right now, they could take those guidance into consideration, and talk to developers and property owners about how to enhance the development. Of course, we've talked about incentives. We need to look at strong incentives for, especially for the uses that we want along the corridor, especially on redevelopment, and of course, we have our whole gamata of available incentives that we have. But the types of uses that we need to look for incentives are basically mixed use, transit-oriented developments, destination, retail, and entertainment venues, and shopping center redevelopment. If you want to put our money where it could really make the best impact, those are the areas that our money needs to focus on. So the next step is adopt the plan, redevelopment plan, and hopefully, again, its council is, would like to see that. We can bring it back on 11/17 for adoption. The next step is adopt the ordinance for impacted parcels, the one that we're going to bring to our 1215. The next step, which is a fairly long step or a fairly time-consuming, is to establish a corridor overlay district. We are at a good position right now, because by the time, if we, if council gives us direction and we start on that process, then by the time the highway is complete and parcels are really coming in for development, then you can have established that corridor overlay district, which also includes, if you, as we look at it in terms of a TIP district, some sort of, you know, some funding mechanism, how can we establish that base and take advantage of all the new stuff that's coming in? And then, we need to really prioritize vacant parcels for further evaluation. Again, we really need to look at that northern portion of vacant parcels that we have, especially in conjunction with what we're trying to do with the Lake Development Project. Identify the cost for the priority public projects and implement some funding strategies. So that includes doing a public improvement district, tax increment financing zone, bringing developers for public-private partnerships, and doing some land banking action. So that's where we are.
How much of the land is the mall on now? Because they sold some of it off, the other areas.
They have, they have sold, everything that has a major department store on it is, doesn't belong to the mall anymore. So the department stores and their associated parking, it belongs to each entity, and then everything that's around the Rainbow is also private. I don't know the actual acreage, but we can certainly get that. But there's still plenty available, especially when they have parking, and they're so overparked, because the parking is only meant for one day out of the year. The trend with new malls is that basically, they want to make it more of an entertainment venue, because people can shop now over the internet. So you really need to have something else that attracts people to come in. So a lot of new malls are going into that mixed use concept, but actually, the old malls that are reinvented. that are reinvented, going through that concept. We're having some outdoor activities. Actually, our mall is looking at having some restaurants that would open up to the mall and also to the outdoor and create some outdoor areas, having people that actually live there maybe, that would, you know, against some pedestrian uses, enhancing the parking lot. So it's really not a parking lot, it's a place, you know, that people can actually walk and have some outdoor activities. So it takes a whole redevelopment plan to look at something different at the mall. But I think the process is starting.
Good question for you. On a scale of utterly speculative to fairly likely, where is our knowledge of parcels taken in phase two?
Fairly likely.
Fairly likely. Okay, high confidence.
Yes, high confidence.
Okay.
Because we pretty much know what the ultimate target plan is.
Doesn't mean it might not change, but we know what's targeted at this point in time.
And they are starting to take properties from phase two.
May I ask any questions or anything?
So I guess we lack direction if we should bring the plan back.
Okay, well, next.
I'm good, Mr. Neal.
Run, buddy.
Don't walk, run, unless you have scissors.
We're gonna run, it'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Is that all?
That's all, sir.
We're going to do that. Item one is public care.
On that one, I think it's gonna pass out immunity to the C. We found a scribbler's error on page six where it says minimum lots. It had 27, it should have been 24. Page six, minimum lots right above letter G. Twenty-four is the correct number.
Twenty-seven is correct.
Twenty-four is correct. This, the handout is correct. What was going to happen?
Would that be a major thing we do as far as?
Just when we adopt the ordinance, promotional say with the new, with the correct immunity to the C.
Correctity to the C.
Which item are you on there?
Item four.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
This is about open space. And when I went back into the zoning and zoning minutes, it referenced open space meeting the requirements for PUD at, I think, .01 acres per lot. And the P and Z committee asked if it met the open space requirement. And it referenced the creek and the northern section. So I contacted city staff and I was told that it was some, well, to back up a little bit, my question was, well, does that mean that other than these two that you're talking about, it does not meet the open space requirement? And I was told that there was, in lieu of meeting the requirement, that there was money involved as per is allowed. And I wanted to know basically, how close do they come to meeting the requirement? And basically, any information I can get as far as to why that wasn't included in the notes that we got or any place else that I could find. I feel like it would go a long way as far as public transparency to know that if they don't, they don't meet it, but per our ordinance, they're allowed to put money in its place.
You did change the ordinance, you know, two years ago, so we no longer require the land substitution.
The ordinance was changed in 2007. And actually, right now, we only require money per lot, $750 per lot for any residential development, unless we absolutely need that acreage that is adjacent to an existing park system, we pretty much take the money and not the land. So this particular development exceeds our requirements. They not only pay $750 per lot, they also have open space, additional open space in the neighborhood. So it does both.
Okay, well, yes, you explained that to me on the phone.
Right.
But I would feel better if the public, you know, knew or had a better feel for what we were doing. I mean, because I'm, you know, maybe have a slight inside track, I was able to track, you know, to find out for myself, but there was no mention in the agenda, in the minutes, how, you know, the trade-off went down or anything like that.
Absolutely. Council of On, we could do, we could make a point to have that requirement mentioned in our staff reports from now on, but the thing is that when we don't mention anything, that means it meets the ordinance requirement, so.
And remember, when you're doing a plan development like this one, that's really the purpose of the plan development is that you're gonna have variation from like a standard zoning requirements. So by its very nature, it's gonna have differences. That was explained in the back, if that makes sense. I mean, everything becomes negotiable.
Yes.
With a plan development.
Right, exactly, okay.
Any other questions on one? Item two, another public care. Item three. Item four. Item five. Item six.
Item six, Mayor. What kind of figure are we talking about here going back and asking the community to accept as a mistake?
Really not asking, we're just correcting it from this point forward. What happened on the roll-off only, there should have been a 10% increase, and that wasn't applied properly in the ordinance. So this went into effect in August. So actually, we're not trying to make that charge retroactive. We would just be increasing that charge going forward as it should have been. All the other fees were increased 10%.
All right.
It was just inadvertently left off.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way I understood it. I just didn't know what the increase was.
It's 10% to the right.
What is the rate?
It was a 10% increase to the 2013 rates, and they vary from the 12, 10-yard roll-off to the 40-yard roll-off.
Okay.
And the rate, the 10% was to have been added to that customer rate. It was inadvertently added to cost of service rate and the franchise fee. So the ordinance was tied to the customer rate plus 10%.
So this is a commercial?
This is commercial roll-off, construction roll-off boxes. The rest of the rates within the ordinance are correct.
Thank you.
Other questions on two? Item seven. Counselor, anything else? Judy? Liz?
Here, I just have Amy Wessery here for items one and two.
Okay. For items one and two?
I'm closed session.
Closed session, okay. I'm looking back, okay, yeah, all right.
We'll go to address those earlier to, like, in leave.
Your agenda's fairly short, it could be your decision.
Did you hear what she just said?
She chinks.
She just said council's gonna take forever tonight. That's what I heard.
You may be right. I stand corrected.
You have any guess?
Yes, sir.
Or adjourn.
It is seven o'clock with the air of quorum. We'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation, who I will lead myself, and then the next is pledge to both American and Texas flags, led by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson.
Gracious Lord God Almighty, we thank you so much for the blessings that you give us each and every day. We thank you for the creation of this world that you've given us. Thank you for giving us dominion over it. We ask that you guide us and strengthen us and help us to have your wisdom and discernment that we might be good stewards of the things that you have given to us. We ask a special blessing tonight on us as we prepare to make decisions for our community, for our city, and for our citizens. We ask that you keep our minds and our hearts in the right places so that we will do things that will honor you. We ask a special blessing for those who are sick, hungry, oppressed, and those who've lost loved ones. We special prayer for those who fight here at home and around the world for justice and truth and freedom and guide and protect them and their families. We ask all this in your son's most precious name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledges of allegiance to our flags. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Almost. You getting there?
I have a couple of procreation that I'd like to present at this time.
If I could, start with, if I could ask Quinn Neal to come forward, please. Hi, Mr. Neal. This is something that affects a lot of us, a lot of people, and probably some people here tonight. And it's a disease that can be crippling in your later years and has many side effects to people in different ways. And so this proclamation is, whereas in the United States, over 29 million people, including over 700,000 in North Texas, have diabetes, a serious disease with potential life-threatening complications such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas an additional 86 million in the United States are at risk for developing type-two diabetes. And whereas recent estimates project that one in three children born today will have diabetes by the time they're 50 years old, if current trends continue. And whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetic epidemic, let it therefore be. Now therefore, I, Dean Uchert, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, the citizens of Lewisville, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2014 as American Diabetes Month. And I encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and join the American Diabetes Association Stop Diabetes Movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to thank you for the work you do. If you'd like to say a few words, give you.
Well, I just want to thank the city of Lewisville for your support. Diabetes, as was mentioned, impacts over 29 million Americans nationwide, and we estimate that over 700,000 here in North Texas are impacted by this disease. The American Diabetes Association is the largest nonprofit organization battling diabetes. And we battle type-one, type-two. We're a comprehensive organization for information and education and funding of research to battle this disease. So thank you again, and thank you so much for your awareness and helping us get the word out.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your efforts and your volunteer and what you do. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
And could I have Amy Wells, please, come forward? Amy's also representing a very special cause. You know, as we look around today, our world changes just daily, and what? changes just daily, and one of the things that we seem to take for granted is the trees in our community. And I think anybody can tell you, and most people know what all the trees do besides just look nice and get a little shade. They also restore oxygen to the world, and they help us as we go out through life. So, with this, I'd like to give you this proclamation. Whereas, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, Louisville has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. And whereas, recognizing that forests provide habitats to about two-thirds of all species on earth, and sustainable management of all types of forest is beneficial. Now, therefore, I, Dean Uchert, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, on behalf of Louisville City Council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, as Arbor Day. And the City of Louisville urge all our citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program, and I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and I promote the well-being of present and future generations, proclaim this third day of November two thousand and fourteen. And I want to present you with this, and would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate what you do. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance for a zone-change request from agriculture open space to planned unit development three, district zoning on one hundred and fifty-four point seven-one-nine acres and public use district zoning on one point three-seven-eight acres for the Lakewood Hills subdivision located south of State Highway one-twenty-one, north of Parker Road along Josie Lane, east of Crida Road, and west of Plano Parkway, as requested by G and A Consultants LLC on behalf of the property owner. The planned unit development district allows for innovative community design concepts that may contain a mix of uses and which may deviate from the city's standard zoning regulations in some regards, but which also provide for community enhancements. The Lakewood Hills Public Utility Development proposes to integrate a maximum of detached single-family residence with supporting recreational amenities and a one-point-three-seven-eight acre site for a future fire station. A development agreement for the subject property was approved on September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The land was subsequently annexed to the City of Louisville on October sixth, two thousand and fourteen. The public utility development is reflective of what was approved in the development agreement. The Planning Zoning Commission approved, recommended approval of the request by vote five-zero at their October twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Recommendation is that council approved the ordinance as set forth in caption above with the correct exhibit C. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes. If there's no public comment, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion, close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve with the corrected exhibit C.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson with the corrected exhibit C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending chapters four fencing, six land development regulations, eleven signs, and seventeen zoning of the Louisville City Code, rezoning one-point-three-seven-eight acres of land located west of Josie Lane and approximately eighteen thousand feet south of Windhaven Parkway, from agricultural open space to public-use zoning, rezoning approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-four point seven-one-nine acres bisected by Josie Lane and approximately six hundred feet north of Parker Road, from agricultural open space zoning to planned unit development three zoning, creating the regulations for the PUD three, correcting the official zoning map, providing severability savings and repealing clauses, providing a penalty for the violation of this ordinance, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is also a public hearing, consideration of ordinance for a zone-change request from light industrial to local commercial located on four-point-three-zero-two acres at the southwest corner of Vista Ridge Mall Drive and Denton Tap Road. Further identified as High Point Oaks Lot Two, Block B, is requested by Brad Larson of the Door Church on behalf of High Point Oaks LTD, the property owner. A church is proposed on the four-point-three-zero-two acre property located at the southwest corner of Vista Ridge Mall Drive and Denton Tap Road. The property is currently zoned light industrial. The property backs up to the High Point Oaks Estates, which was rezoned from light industrial to a state townhouse. This lot has approximately eight hundred feet of frontage along Denton Tap and two-hundred-and-thirty feet of depth. The zone change would allow greater flexibility with setbacks for development of this rectangular-shaped lot and would be more compatible with adjacent residential development. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by vote of five-zero at their October seventh, two thousand and fourteen meeting. Recommendation is staffs that council approved the proposed ordinance as set forth in the above caption. And I do have a speaker card here filled out by Mr. Bob Easterland. He does not wish to speak, but he is here to answer any questions if anyone might have them. Councilman Vaughn, did you have any, Patty, have any questions at this gentleman?
Counselor?
Vaughn, entertain motion, close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, close the public hearing, second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, by rezoning High Point Oaks Lot Two, Block B, containing approximately four-point-three-zero-two acres of land, from light industrial district zoning to local commercial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is vista citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have any speaker cards filled out, didn't have anybody wish to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone asked to have anything pulled and did not have any speaker, I mean, any cards filled out. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham, approve consent agenda, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is consideration of ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section two-dash-two-zero-one Fee Schedule, by revising the fees related to solid waste roll-off collection. On July seventh, two thousand and fourteen, City Council approved solid waste collection fees for residential trash and recycling services, commercial front-low container service, and commercial roll-off container service. Those rates became effective to customers with August billings. After the first month of billing occurred and monthly reports were received from Waste Management, it was determined that an error had occurred in the calculation of commercial roll-off rates charged to customers. The intent of the new franchise agreement was to increase the customer fees by ten percent over the customer rates established for calendar year two thousand and thirteen. In the process of calculating the new rates, adjustments were incorrectly applied. The error impacted only the roll-off rates, and those rates need to be modified to reflect appropriate commercial, customer roll-off rates for two thousand and fourteen. Recommendation is staffs, is council approved amendment as set forth in the ordinance. Councilman Tierney?
Who's to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter Two, Article Eight, Section two-dash-two-zero-one Fee Schedule, by revising the fees relating to solid waste collection, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is consideration of a final plat for the Castle Hills Phase Seven, Section A, containing two common area lots and Cheyenne Drive right-of-way dedication located on zero-point-nine-one-nine-four acres designated a state townhouse with one associated variance located at the terminus point of Cheyenne Drive and Medical Parkway, as requested by Brian Dench, P.E., of Land Design, Inc., representing the property owner. The subject property is part of a final plat of Castle Hills Phase Seven, Section A, that was approved by the Planning Zoning Commission on April first, two thousand and fourteen. The purpose of the plat is to split Lot twenty-two-X into Lot twenty-two-X dash R and Lot twenty-three-X and create a sixty-two-foot right-of-way for Cheyenne Drive. The subdivision did not provide a connection to the existing Cheyenne Drive in Carrollton, which currently dead ends at the east side of this phase of Castle Hills. Castle Hills has agreed the City of Carrollton to connect Cheyenne Drive to Damsel-Catlin Drive. This new intersection requires the following variance: to reduce required street offset spacing for, of intersections from one-hundred-and-fifty feet to one-hundred feet between the proposed drives and the existing Daniel Madison Lane intersection of Daniel, Damsel-Catlin Drive. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the plat and the variance at their October seventh, two thousand and fourteen meeting of vote of five-zero. Recommendation is that council approved the final plat and associated variance as set forth in the caption above. Once again, I do have a speaker card filled out here. He does not wish to speak, but he's here to answer any questions from Atreg El Sarde, and if I mispronounce that, I apologize. Do anybody have any questions? Mr. Sarde? Councilman Gilmore, you take motion, close?
Mayor, move to close, no.
I beg pardon, it's not a, it's not.
Move to approve the final plat and the associated variance as written.
Thank you, Councilman Gilmore.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented, and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings standard reports. Nika? Bob? Nothing from Parks and Wildlife yet, huh? They're busy after getting those deer hunting, aren't they? Chief? Linda? Chief?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Just want to report, we had a first month of our premier neighborhood police services program that we put into place this fiscal year as part of the Vision Twenty Twenty-Five Plan, Thriving Neighborhoods. And we logged over thirty-eight hours of overtime this past month in October to be used in the neighborhoods, and we coupled that with our school zone enforcement that we were doing in those specific neighborhoods. So, it seemed to be pretty well-liked by citizens. Actually had a violator that an officer stopped on a traffic stop, called to commend him on his professionalism and courteousness. So, that's really, that's a good sign.
We need to save that recording, please.
We'll save that one in bronze, I think.
Yeah. Carol?
Yes, Mayor, just giving up an updating report on our creek and drainage cleanup project. We finished the area of the Business One-twenty-one and Thirty-five, and if you get over in that way, you can see a tremendous difference. I didn't realize how much the cleanup would make a difference till I went over there, and it looks very nice. And we'll have some photos before and after that we can get posted for you, so you can see those. This week, they're starting at Business One-twenty-one and Thirty-Forty, and there's a lot to be done there, so I think you'll see a big difference there as well. In about a couple of weeks, we're gonna start in the creeks. And so, we're into the second month of the program, and the guys are excited about it, and I think it even surprises them how much difference it makes. And you don't notice that it's a little scrubby till they get it cleaned up, but it's going very well.
Well, great, and we appreciate the work they do. I know sometimes they don't get some of the thank-yous and kudos that some of the other departments get, but we do greatly appreciate what they do. Gina? Brenda? Mr. Ferris?
I'm Mayor.
Mr. Bacchus?
No.
Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I would like to let citizens know, we have a new tool available to us through the Police Department called TIP four-one-one. It's a new anonymous tool that you can use on a traditional cellphone, or you can download an app for your iPhone or Android phone. You can hop onto the city website. It's right there in our news section, and it's called TIP four-one-one. If you are one of those app users, just go to your required app store and type in TIP, T-I-P-L-P-D, Louisville Police Department, and that'll get the app put up for you. And remember, this is for anonymous tips. If you see something going on that needs an immediate response, please call nine-one-one or call the police non-emergency number. So, this is a, this is a, this is a nine-to-five type of thing during the week. I wouldn't do it on the weekends, but it's a great new service, and we really appreciate the Police Department putting it out there. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager Baron?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start with the MCL Grand. We've got three stage shows coming up. The first one is Disney's Little Mermaid Junior. This is being performed in four shows from November sixth through the ninth and presented by The Acting Studio. We have Buddy Holly and Roy Arbuzin present the Texas Family Musical's Farewell Concert, so last concert of the year. One show on November fifteenth. And then, we have one-act drama by a very famous playwright Noel Coward called Postmortem, and that's being presented by NCTC Theater Department. Two shows, November twenty-first and twenty-second. Public events, we've got the GLAA Angel Awards. This is an annual presentation to individuals who have done outstanding work in the arts community. That will be on November sixteenth, and it's presented, of course, by GLAA, and will take place at the MCL Grand, November sixteenth. We have Healthy You that's continuing. This next one is the Great American Smokeout on November thirteenth, and that's presented by Medical Center of Louisville. And, of course, we always have the Visual Arts League Friday Night Jams that start at seven PM, usually in the art gallery. Speaking of which, a couple of art exhibits. The first one, I'll Be Home. This is Memories of World War II. That starts on November fifteenth and continues through November, through, sorry, December twenty-seventh in the art gallery. And in the north wing hallway, we have Toyland presented by Visual Arts League, again, the same period of time, November fifteenth through the twenty-seventh. And the art gallery is open Tuesdays through Saturdays, I think it is, and always open during performances. One other item, I'm gonna turn back to the city manager, or Mr. Conkey, and ask you to tell us about something incredibly exciting that's going to be happening at the lake.
I'm going to let Mr. Conkey describe that. It is an exciting event that will be new to Louisville that deals with jet skis, I believe.
That is correct. Councilman Ferguson, as you pointed out, we were able to announce earlier today, in fact, with a media release, that we have reached an agreement with the Pro Watercross Tour to bring a tour event to Louisville Lake for the first time. It will be July seventeen through nineteen of next year. The first day will be a corporate challenge, then two days of racing with both national and international teams. So, we do expect to see quite a bit of hotel impact, hopefully a lot of spectator interest. They're calling it the Liberty Cup, a name they picked, and we're perfectly fine with that. So, it'll be a professional, personal watercraft racing on closed course, July seventeen through nineteen, staged at Louisville Lake Park.
I think this is super exciting, so that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, Mayor.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, appreciate you being here tonight. We appreciate what you and your fellow team members do each and every day for us. Thank you, sir. As we come close to our holidays, when you start doing your Thanksgiving and Christmas and other holiday shopping, do it here in Louisville. Support your local businesses here in town. Now, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, Arulio Durante et al. versus the City of Louisville, Texas Case Number one-three-dash-four-zero-eight-zero-six, United States Corvus Case Number 13-40806, United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, State of Texas versus City of Louisville, Texas, Case Number PR2014-00501, Probate Court of Denton County, Texas, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Legal Issues Related to the Construction of the Old Town Park Plaza, and Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now convene into closed session. Will convene back to regular session. Is there any action to be taken, Council?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we accept the Special Commissioner's Award in Case Number
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.